All right, very good, very good. Thank you, thanks. Thank you, everyone, for coming. All right, and good evening and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's agenda. Wednesday, July 14, 2021. It is 6:35 PM and we are at the multi-service center. I want to call the meeting to order. My far-right independent consultant, professional engineer, Mr. Charles Rowley. Associate member Chris Conti. Member Veronica Devenese, our clerk. Jim Akabachi. My far-left associate member, Richard Sample. Member Jake Morrison, myself, the chair, Nazir Akalasi. We don't have any preliminary business. We're gonna start with the continued public hearing. Twenty-two dash twenty, Frederick Mannix.
Do you want to put that to the end and let everything? Do you mind?
No. No, no, no.
Wrong, okay.
Yeah, that's too many. Yeah, twenty-two dash twenty, Frederick Mannix, 238 and 240 Sandwich Road. All right, the public hearing's still open. If you, counselor, name and address for the record and your applicant and your client and fill us in, see what's up, where we are.
Attorney Jillian Morton of 184 Main Street.
Fred Mannix, 188 North Street, Boston, Mass.
Okay, where did we leave it last time?
Sure, if I may, Mr. Chair, we have copies of the new rendering without the tower. So that was electronically sent to you, but if you wanted the bigger versions, if I can distribute those?
Yeah, if you can, I didn't have a chance to look at it. If you could pass them and to see where. And I know yesterday you guys had a visit. Who attended the visit? Veronica, did you go? Jim? Who else? Chris? Richard?
Yes, I was there.
Yeah.
I wasn't able to make it.
Chris Veronica, Richard, and Ken Button was there.
All right. And there was, and this is sample on that one. Okay.
Is everybody?
I think so.
All right. Good.
You guys got a copy down there?
Yep. All right. So, let's see, how did it go? What did we do since then? How did you address a bunch of issues with Mr. Rowley? And, let's see. Let's hear it.
Man?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, as far as Mr. Rowley's comments and the site plan, we're, I'll have the plan back tomorrow.
Okay.
We've addressed all of them. We have to obviously give them into him. And J.C. Engineering is gonna have a final draft with the corrections for me this week.
Okay.
But I wanted to come in and try to be brief about the suggestions that were made the last time we met regarding the height of the building.
Okay.
Primarily, and address, I think, Mr. Akabachi had a question way back about the length of that, that...
You already answered. You said, I'm satisfied with the answer, we already answered.
Yeah, we were able to also to, I know you were, but we're able to find another way to get a second means of egress. So I'm able to address that.
No, I'm not satisfied, I'm elated.
And, I'm, Mr. Devenese, I had a suggestion from you about the height, which I think we've addressed. And Mr. Sample came up with an idea about doing something with some, I guess we're talking about the kitchen and having some kind of a glass up at the roof. That wasn't quite practical, but it gave me a good idea. And just to, just to just quickly say, the whole idea with the tower was to have something dramatic and something nice for people to gather in. And I think with a combination of what, especially with your idea. My idea was to have something big, airy, and if we put in some skylights in that area, it's gonna, it's gonna give people the sky. You can't ask for more than that. And it won't be, it won't be high. So, to get quickly to it, I, the sheets that I gave you, there are four sheets and there's two, there's two packages. One package, the first page, A09, is primarily the whole thing, what it's about. This is the south elevation and the west elevation in the main building. And we left the tower roof, the 66-foot mark up there, just as a reference point. But what we did was we were able to bring the whole thing down to 47 feet, essentially knocking about 20 feet off of our request by eliminating the tower. And if you look carefully, we wrapped a glass that we had in the solarium around the tower lobby, and I think it's gonna be...
So now your variance height, seven feet, right? Because it's 40 feet...
Well, technically, it's, I believe it's nine because we have to add, no, I believe it's 10. We have to add three feet because of the grade drop-off. So the building height is seven feet, but the, by code, I have to add some height to that for the average grade is three feet more than what you see here. So that's why...
To the center of the building?
Yeah, to the average grade across the face of the building. So in effect, the building is really 60, 47 feet high, but it's really three feet higher by code definition, not by size.
Right.
I think what was addressed, hopefully, at, when everybody viewed the land, you could see what we're talking about. The land is pretty much in a hollow. So, you know, the, the height variance, even though it's 10 feet versus 29 feet, it still doesn't, I don't think it affects as it would if it were a flat plain, if it was, you know, there were no roads around it, no hills around it. When it comes down to looking at the elevations, kind of, it's kind of a technical look. And then we, what we did, the view from Sandwich Road, which is the next page, excuse me, A12, that shows that the tower completely is gone in that view. This view from Sandwich Road is from someone standing there and looking at the building. What we did in the next page, A9, is show you what we had proposed originally, which is what the tower and the solarium, and it gives you the elevations that you see on that, on that drawing. And the fourth page shows you the, the view from Sandwich Road with the tower in place. Now, we're not proposing to do it, but I just wanted to put that in there to remind everybody of what it was we were proposing and what we're proposing now. The, the next view from the southeast is another view of the building as we propose it, and a view from the southeast of the building as it was proposed in the original submission. As you can see, you can see a little bit of the tower in that view, but now with the new height, you don't see anything of the tower. You still see the railing, the deck railing. I think it's a decorative feature. I don't think it looks bad. And it serves us as a safety rail for the deck. And again, back to Mr. Sample, that, you don't see it here, but there are skylights in that elevator lobby, if you recall, that big lobby, so that when you come in, that was the whole idea of the tower, but I can see the point of, it's kind of tall.
Yep, no, I appreciate, I appreciate the consideration.
We have the same, we have the same effect, basically. It's a, it's a good, a great idea, saved me some money.
No, I appreciate the considerations.
Yep, no, okay, thank you. Good, great idea.
All right. Anyone in the audience want to speak in behalf of this project? For or against? All right, I'm gonna start by Chris. So what do you think? Let's, let's concentrate on the variance right now. Then we go over the site plan.
Well, I like the fact that he did reduce the height. I still think the footprint is way too large for the property, but that's just my opinion, I guess.
Veronica.
I, I feel similar to Mr. Conti in terms of the size of the building and the space that's on the, that it fills, the two acres. I know that you're trying to accommodate some of the requests, but in my mind, we're reaching the maximum of all of the allowable uses in that spot. And I love the solarium. I think it's gonna be a great addition to have that facility in that location. However, at this point, I'm, and I don't see that it's gonna change, is that I just feel like your building height, because of the whole project as a whole, is just, I can't see a hardship to allow it. Guess that's it.
Okay, Jimmy?
I'm all set.
Richard?
I'm all set, sir.
Jake?
I'm okay.
All right. Let's go to the site plan quick. Charlie, did we, what do we get addressed and not addressed? Do you have all these issues addressed, like Mr. Mannix said?
I don't have anything from J.C. yet.
Okay.
Nothing.
Yeah.
The only thing that I, excuse me. The only thing I can report to you is that, I think it was Tuesday, I met a gentleman from J.C. out there, and we investigated the soil conditions on the low spot that is in part of my report, that I was concerned that they were waiting too late to do the testing for groundwater. We found where it was, and it basically is at the same elevation as was reported in the 2003 test pits that are on the plan. So that issue goes away.
Okay.
But that's the only thing we've discussed. I haven't seen anything else from J.C. yet.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. I, he's correct. We had to wait for the test pits, and I really would like to submit that. I don't think we need a hearing to submit it. I think I'm at a point where if we've answered all of Charlie's questions, that we want to make sure that they are answered correctly.
Right.
And the test pit comes in, and I think we're prepared to put that in, and hopefully we can do that separately. I just wanted to come here to deal with the height issue that we have.
Right, okay.
And we're prepared to do that shortly and get this thing moving.
Right. Now, let me ask you something. Say, you're not asking for any variance except the maintenance shed and the solarium, right?
Right. The maintenance shed, we voted on last meeting.
Right, right, so that's what I'm saying. So there's only these two variants on the, on the coverage, FAR, all this is compliant.
Right.
All right. I mean, that being said, we should take a vote on the variance so we know where we're going. I guess the shed we did last time. So let's close the public hearing, the variance part only.
So I make a motion that we close the public hearing...
For the variance?
Only for the portion of this hearing that deals with the height of the building.
With the variance for the height. Okay, do I have a second?
Before we go further, so are we voting on right now the solarium?
Yes, the height, yes.
The height of the solarium, okay, so...
Not on site plan.
So if we deny the solarium right now, then they're just left with that building?
Just the building, yeah, we go back?
Okay, so, yeah. All right, this is pretty important, all right.
Right. So do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Jake. All in favor to close that part, say aye?
Aye.
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 And myself, aye. Okay, motions.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant a variance for the height as shown on the revised A09. Is there a date on this?
There is.
July 14th.
July 14th.
Well, let's call it...
Date is July 14th, yeah.
Right, with the maximum of 47 feet from the lowest point, right? To the, that's 10 feet from the average, right?
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure how you want to do that.
I want to refer to the plan as what we're...
It shows, and the plan shows 47 feet, counting zero as the first floor. However, there is a definition in the height, in the zoning code, that says it's measured from the average grade.
Correct.
So the actual definition height is three feet longer. It's, it would be 50 feet.
All right, so let's do, let's condition the variance, it's 47 from zero grade, from the lowest point.
As shown at 47, no exceed 50 of the average.
Okay.
Fifty, the, I'm sorry.
Fifty of the average.
How would you do this?
Forty-seven from the zero, right?
Forty-seven and three is 50.
All right, let's do 47 from zero.
Zero.
From zero. And then we take it from there. So this is the motion by Jim. You have a second on that?
Second that.
Second by Jake's, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Veronica?
Deny.
I'll say aye. So that passes. All right.
So we're done with that?
We're done with that.
So now, are we gonna...
Now we're going to the site plan, we have to address the issues.
I, I'd like to just, Mr. Chairman, I talked to the sewer director. There were some questions about the sewerage, and I'm meeting with him next week.
Okay.
To go over some things. We had a discussion on the phone. We both recalled what we talked about, but it's not, I'm gonna meet with Guy. He told me I could meet him next week at some point.
All right.
That's one little thing. We would like to base our impact statement, if, if tonight moves me along on my variance request, and then the, that'll obviously be part of my impact statement, which I'll prepare. And as far as the site plan goes, I do not, he did not get it to me today. He told, I haven't looked at it, but...
That's fine.
I'm assured that all the changes were made, and I also have a response from my landscape architect regarding some of the tree questions that came up, and we'll...
Well, we'll address these issues as they come in.
Yeah.
So you have to work it out, so...
Okay.
All right, but I'm gonna need an extension and writing from you till August 26. So if you put an extension, sign it, decision extension till August 26. So Sonia, please write this down, the attorney Morton. We'll get you an extension till August 26 for petition 22 dash 20, Frederick Mannix. All right, that being said, I guess, do you want to come next hearing? Or do you want to wait?
I'm, I didn't get it today. I'm not saying he didn't, he's not gonna get it to me, but I'd feel more comfortable if I had a little more time to make sure that, I don't want to keep coming back and...
Okay, so what do you want, August 11?
Put it on for both, and then if you don't have it, we can just continue?
Let's continue, we kind of have a conflict. I'm, I'm available next week, he's not, and then I'm not available at 11.
All right, so you get, you get July 28 or August 11? What do you want?
Let's keep, can we keep both?
Sure. I would, I recommend, just in case a miracle happens.
Yeah, I'd like to try to ask, but I know everyone's, it's been a long time, we talked about it, and I, hopefully, it's come to...
You get two meetings for one extension, you know, it's a bargain.
Yeah.
Okay, so can I have a motion to continue 22 dash 20, 238 Sandwich Road, till August 28?
So moved.
Do I have a second on that?
I second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 All right, it carries. So we'll see you on 28.
Of, of July?
Oh, yeah, July 28, correct.
With the deadline extended till August 26?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, next, next, continue public hearing. 24 dash 21, Alisa Morse, special permit to Sarabath Lane. Is Mrs. Morse here? All right.
Any letters or anything? This is 24, 21?
July 27. All right, so we're gonna have to deny or...
Are we at the end of, are we at the end of the line here?
Yes, the deadline is 27, so we have to make a motion today on it. So the applicant's not here, let's make a motion to close.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion to close 24 dash 21. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I moved, I moved to deny without prejudice.
Okay, any discussion on that?
She's not here.
Yeah, and I would ask, I would say, why without prejudice? Just deny?
Well...
She's missed like four, three or four meetings.
I know, she's missed four or five. I just don't want to make her have to wait two years to come back if she's earnest, and if all the angst over this was an error because somebody, because a neighbor had a box on the neighbor's land and these people got roasted for it.
Okay.
I still think that's a possibility. I still think that the wrong person may, I mean, I know there's two boxes, one on, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I get you.
So I think that, in all fairness, I want to have her have the opportunity to come back if she desires, and if she doesn't come back...
All right, well, we'll see what, how your motion goes. Do I have a second on Jim's?
Second.
Second by Jake, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Richard, you on this one?
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
And myself, I guess, aye. So I guess, denied without prejudice. I need this filed. You know what, we could, we could sign all these papers after.
Yeah, we can, at the end of the night, just don't anybody leave at the end. We're gonna do some signatures. So the next one up is North Star, 31, 21?
Yeah. North, okay, continue public hearing, 31 dash 21, North Star Management, to use variance on 2,400 square, 2,400 Cranberry Highway. All right.
Are you, are you part of the applicants?
Well, I was part of Alisa Morse, and...
Oh, oh, wait a minute. We kind of...
They called out, you know...
We closed the public...
My wife was going to be here, she did all the paperwork and running around on this and everything too, and she cannot be here for personal reasons, so she's left me to do her paperwork here.
So when we called, when we called, that was your time to come up?
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, that's okay. Are you, are you...
I'm a butter.
Are you in favor or against?
I'm against.
It's, it's been denied, so she has to apply again. You will be notified.
Okay, we'll be notified.
Yeah. So you'll have your chance to talk, so it was, it was denied right now without prejudice, so she could reapply, so she'll have to notify you again, all this thing.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for, for the confusion.
Okay, I'm first time through.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen, for stepping back for a minute.
No problem.
All right.
So North Star has to be read in, and that would be probably me, wouldn't it?
No, it's been read in, it's been opened.
It's been opened?
Yeah, last time.
Okay.
Counselor, I mean, the public hearing's been open, we just need name and address for the record, and you have the floor.
Attorney Dennis Conroy appearing in behalf of North Star Management.
Yeah.
And Emil Bussier of North Star Management, who's with me today.
Okay.
I can't hear the gentleman.
You guys gotta get to the mic.
Sorry. Old habits die hard. Can you hand this up to the...
Oh, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, what I just handed up was a, was a summary of what I'm gonna say today.
Okay.
And I made six copies, so you can distribute it if you so choose.
All right, so let's hear it.
One for, okay.
Okay, in the past, what, what I've started these meetings with is a, is a statement of the, of the intent that was filed with, with the petition. And unless you object to that, I'm gonna proceed with that. The applicant, North Star Management, of 300 Constitution Drive, Portsmouth, Hampshire, has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with Carl Nelson and Sally Ann Nelson for the purchase of five, or 3.53 acres of land owned by Carl and Sally Ann Nelson, for the purpose of constructing a two-story climate-controlled mini-storage Center on property designated as 2,400 and actually 2,402 Cranberry Highway. The site is currently occupied by the building built in 1949, is what my information now is. Originally constructed as an automobile sales and service facility, which was subsequently converted for use as a pharmacy. The property has been vacant for many years. The parcel is located in the industrial zone district. North Star Management has applied for a building permit to construct a climate-controlled mini-storage Center on the property. David Raquena, building commissioner of the town of Wareham, issued a denial of the applicant, of the applicant's application for building, citing for his reasons for the denial the following, and I'm quoting from Mr. Raquena's decision. Article 3, Section 320, Table of Principal Use Regulations. Storage facilities are not permitted in any district in the town. A use variance from the zoning board of appeals is required in order to proceed with your request. And then Article 14, Section 1471, Use Variance. The Board of Appeals is specifically empowered to grant variances from restrictions imposed by this bylaw as to use. The applicant has filed an application for a public hearing before the Board of Appeals requesting that either the board issue a use variance to allow the proposed use to be conducted on the site, or, in the alternative, determine that the proposed use is otherwise permitted or allowed under the zoning bylaws. The applicant has filed in support herof, its conceptual site plan that's right over there, and we'll pull it up in a minute to get a little closer. In order to provide the board with specific information concerning the size and scope of the project and the nature of the use that the applicant seeks to conduct on this site. The applicant has not yet obtained fully detailed architectural and engineering plans, which will need to be provided to the board for a final determination by the board of the building and site plan before issuing its final approval of the project. The applicant proposes to construct a two-story, 60,000-square-foot, 300-by-100 building, climate-controlled building, storage facility on 3.583 acres. The proposed building will be in compliance with all dimensional regulations contained in the zoning bylaw. The applicant has also provided the board with architectural renderings of the proposed facility and photographs showing existing conditions on the site, together with a photograph of the property and the businesses situated directly across the street from the site. At this time, before undertaking the cost of producing final design and engineering plans, the applicant requests that the board either grant the use variance, or deem the proposed use permissible. Should the applicant receive the relief requested herein, it will then move forward with the remainder of the required planning process to obtain its permits. Now, I, I think I'd like to go into a little bit of history on this site, because that, that's the, that's the, that's an important piece of this. This property was, as I mentioned, previously constructed in 1949 as an automobile dealership. Strawn Buick was the name of it. It was still functioning when I, when I came to town a long time ago. That use continued, I think Strawn stayed on the property until 1986. Other people occupied the property, rented the property until 1992, when Wareham Pharmacy relocated from its previous site on Wareham, or on Main Street in Wareham, to the site. And that, Wareham Pharmacy operated there until May of 2008, when the pharmacy, or the customers of that pharmacy, moved over to Target. And the building has been closed for the last 13 years. Mr. and Mrs. Nelson bought the property in the 1990s, I believe, and they continue to own it. Mr. Nelson is now 90?
93.
93 years old. And he has entered into a purchase and sale agreement with North Star Management to, to allow them to build their, their project on the site. Now, the zoning issues are as follows. The town of Wareham created the Wareham Industrial Zone in 1967. At that time, Strawn Buick was in operation, and it was, it was a permitted use. The zoning, or the industrial zone was split between two parts. One of them on what I think is the north side of, of Cranberry Highway, which has become the industrial park, Thatcher Road, all that is very well-known to the board. And the other, the other piece was, was authorized at the same time, Patterson's Brook Road on the south side of Route 28. So... So we've had a lot of changes since 1967 in this town. I submit, I bore witness to most of it, and I think they're all positive changes. I don't think in 1967, anyone could have, could have imagined that Cranberry Highway would have become what it has become. It has transitioned from a very appropriate site for a contractor's yard to a very popular retail and, and successful retail zone. Lots of building, lots of attractive buildings have been built. So it has changed from a place that you would wanna put a use that you would hide from public view to one now that you want, you would wanna be proud of. Many people come from out of town, drive down the street, and are attracted to the, the mall, and now all the ancillary businesses that have spun off of that. What we're looking to do is have another similar business that will fit in with what the development has actually, or what Cranberry Highway has turned into. So the, the, the odd thing here is, is, is the zoning piece. It's, it's zoned right down, right down to Cranberry Highway as the industrial zone. Most of the industrial park is located on the other side of Great Hill Mobile Home, or Mobile Home Park. It's almost, it's cut off from the rest of the industrial uses. And the industri, I, I believe that Mobile Home Park is also located in the industrial zone. So there are, there are, there are many uses that would be appropriate for this site. Unfortunately, most of those uses are not allowed in the industrial zone. So on, on page two of the memorandum that I, that I, that I drew up, I listed some of the, the uses that you would think would be appropriate for that. And, you know, restaurants, retail establishments, motor vehicle sales. You can't have a motor vehicle sales office in the industrial zone. Filling stations, a motel hotel, you can't have those in the industrial park or the industrial zone. Other places of amusement. I won't go through all of them, but there's many uses that you'd say would be perfect for this site, but, but you'd need a variance to do any one of them. Now, the nearby businesses next to the Nelson site, as I said, the, the Mobile Home Park is right out front. Now, I submit, or right out back. I submit that an appropriate use of this property would be sensitive to all the residential users up in the Mobile Home Park. Funny, I hadn't, I'd been in town for a long time. I'd never driven through that park before. There's an awful lot of people living up in there. And, and I don't think you'd wanna have a heavily, a heavy industrial use right adjacent to it, that these people have to drive by. I think historically, people have segregated industrial uses to a part of town that's a little out of, out of view from everything. That's really all we're asking for in, in, in this, in this application, is to be able to build an, a, a business or run a business, build a business, build a building and run a business that is like the good stuff that's been built on Cranberry Highway. Because the scary thing would be, from the town's point of view, what would happen if somebody came into the building, building department and asked, wanted to pull a permit for some of these uses that are on page three? These are all, I took the, took the liberty of, of lifting the, the uses from, from the, from table, uh, section 321 of the zoning bylaw. I went through them and looked at the column over on the right where all the industrial uses, where the industrial uses are. You know, I'm sure you guys are all familiar with, with that table. And, and if you run down the line, looking at what's allowed in the industrial zone by right, not, don't have to come before this Board, all they have to do is pull a permit. I, I'm, if you read up from the bottom, trucking and transportation terminals, public service or other passenger stations, solid waste facility, hazardous waste facility, gravel, loam, sand, stone, and earth removal. Well, maybe once upon a time, this, this, this site was appropriate for a contractor's yard. And as a matter of fact, there's, there's still a contractor's yard dating from the 1960s, just on the other side of the road up to the Mobile Home Park. So what, what our, what our point is, we, so either, in, in, in reading the, I, I've studied more ti, I spent more time than I probably wanted to trying to figure out the, the uses and what they mean and the definitions and, and it, it, it's, it's surprising to me that, that you can't have a storage facility anywhere in town, but that's, that's a discussion maybe for another day. The, seems to me, an important use that ought to be allowed in the town, but I'm not asking you to change the zoning bylaw. The, the town, the town has, has taken the option that's available to municipalities to reserve the right to grant use variances. Many towns and communities don't allow use variances. There's no rescue from a bad situation if you, or from a, a system, situation that cries out for a remedy. If you don't have the right to grant a use variance, you're stuck with it until you, until you would, in this case, do a, a zoning change. But Wareham has reserved that right. So, and we're asking the Court, or the, the Board to exercise its discretion and, and grant it. So when, whenever someone comes before you, I'm sure you, you're all well aware of this, is that the applicant has to first show that there's something unique or special about his lot that's different from all the other lots in that zoning district. Well, I thought about this, 'cause we're not, ordinarily, you come in with a, if it's a dimensional variance you're looking for, you, you look at the shape or the size or the topography and all that stuff, or the building that's on it. We're not asking for that. But what's special about this site? Well, I, I studied it. What's, what's special about it is, is the zoning. It's, it's cut off from the rest of the industrial park, or the industrial zone. But it's pretty much severed by the, because the Mobile Home Park is between it. This is a very small lot. It's kinda like the, I don't know how many, well, there aren't many lots in the industrial zone that are not built upon. Actually, this one's not built, is built upon too, but it, but it's, but it has a decrepit building that needs, that needs to come down. So, so our, our position is that the unique thing is, you can't, the owner can't now by right build what should be on this property. And, and they need a special, they need a variance in order to build what's appropriate. So one of the, the key pieces of the, the zoning bylaw, and the purpose of the zoning bylaw, is to promote the most appropriate use of land in town. So if, if, if you were to deny our, our, our application for variance and say, no, we're not gonna grant a variance for this, because then, then essentially, someone is gonna have to come forward with a use that is, that is allowed, which, which may not be a very great use from the town's perspective, but you might, but the building department might be stuck with issuing a permit. So, so we're asking common sense to prevail here. This, anybody who looks at this, this was a retail use, and it was a use, or a, an auto dealership use. Neither one of those uses were, are allowed in the, in the, in the industrial zone. So we, Mr. Nelson couldn't go back and, and find another tenant to do what was doing it previously. So this isn't a, a situation that was created by an owner of property. Sometimes people will do something weird with their property, or cut it in half, and then come back before the Board and ask for relief. This is not a problem or a situation that was caused by Mr. Nelson. So I submit that we have a unique situation here, that it's, it's not, it doesn't affect any other lots in the, in the industrial zoning district. So I submit that, on that basis, we, we would fulfill the first prop, requirement of getting a, a variance. The second is that, is that we must show a hardship. Well, Mr. and Mrs. Nelson, you know, have owned this property, and it's been vacant for 13 years. Haven't received any income for it, paid taxes on it. And now, they're looking to sell it at, at a fair and reasonable value, as the market will, will, will dictate. And they have entered into a, a, a purchase and sale agreement with my clients to purchase the, to, to, to purchase the property. So if they can't sell the property to my client for this use, or any, or any use, any other use that's not allowed in, in the industrial zone, I don't, the allowed, the allowed uses on this are, are, are very limited. So the number of allowed uses in this predicament that they have is gonna drive the value of this property down to nothing, because there's, there's, there's nothing that, that I can see on the allowed uses that is economically viable, or is, or is, or is a good use of this property. Also, it would seem to be in the town's benefit to derive as much revenue from this property as possible. So to get the, get the nicest building or the nicest, the best use for this property, which will, and it'll be good for Mr. and Mrs. Nelson, it'll be good for my clients, and it'll also be good for the town of Wareham. the other, the other requirements are that we must demonstrate that, that this action won't, if you granted this variance, it wouldn't derogate from the intention, from the, from the intention of the, of the zoning bylaw, and I mentioned that a moment ago, that the zoning bylaw is primarily concerned with assuring that the most appropriate use of property is obtained. And finally, we must show that this use will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. So we have our, we've, we've provided, in our, in our filing, we've provided copies of the plan to the, each of the indoor Board, Board members, and, and copies of the elevations and the, and the renderings. And I also took the opportunity to provide each of you some, a few samples of what the neighborhood looks like now. There, I took, I think I took some photographs of the business across the street, pictures of the, of the site itself, a picture of the, the contractor's yard on the other side of Great Hill Avenue. So I submit that it will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. It'll clean up a, a site that has, quite frankly, been a, an eyesore to the neighborhood for a long time. So that essentially is, is our position today, and we understand that, and, and Mr. Bussier will ask, answer any questions that you may have about the, the plan, bearing in mind that the plan is not a, it's a conceptual plan.
I understand.
And, you know, the, he can, he can give you some information about his experience, the fact that, you know, that they're, that they have, they're very experienced in this business. They have projects ongoing, one in New Bedford, one recently finished in Bourne. They do a good job. I, it looks, I'm a little biased, I guess, but this looks like a, a really good project for this, for this site. Looks like that building would be a, be a positive for the town of Wareham and all the people coming through town.
If I may, Jacob Morrison.
Sure.
I, I like the project. I've been looking at that decrepit building for many years now going by there, so I don't have a problem with that. And I've been trying to get a storage unit for myself for the past two years in, in this town, and they're all sold out. So I don't think it would be a bad project, just me personally, as of right now.
All right. Let me put my two cents. I get an in rate on, you see, like, like you said, storage facilities are not allowed in any part of the town. This Board has known, we do, if do, if we, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, by the way. I personally like to give use variances if I feel fit. In this matter, if I see in every zone, it's not allowed use, so apparently the, the voters in the town of Wareham don't want storage facilities. Let's say you wanna put a restaurant. I guess restaurant allowed down the street from you. I have no problem using it. And personally, I do not like to see a perfect retail property go to a storage. This is my opinion anyway. I'm gonna start with the Board. This one was sitting on it. Mr. Sample's sitting on this, but I'll take some comment from Chris. Chris, you wanna comment on that?
Is, is this gonna be, like, accessible 24 hours a day? So, so people will be coming in and out of there? They possibly could come out of there, in and out of there 24 hours a day?
We're, we're always willing to work with any town to meet any requirements that they wanna see with respect to minimizing the hours at these facilities. Generally, when we first present, it's a 24-hour facility, and it's fully securitized, which I understand is typically the concerns that people have about having a facility open 24 hours. There's wall pack lightings around the entire facility. There's a pretty elaborate security camera set up within each one of these facilities and on the exterior of the facility, so that literally every single door is covered. And we know who's there inside the facility every time someone comes in, because we also have a key fob system that's, gives every customer an individualized code, so that if you had a facility and you walked in, you punched in your key, I mean, you waved your fob or you punched in a key code, we know that you're the one that's in the building. And then your movements are monitored via the security camera around the entire facility. And that's the same thing for any of the exterior units that are accessible around the outside. However, we also have done other facilities where we have modified hours for people that they couldn't come between certain hours. They would be closed between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM, or something along those lines. But a lot of times, we see local contractors, they wanna keep some of their tools of the trade there. They wanna leave in the morning and, you know, hop in their van at 4:00 in the morning. They wanna be able to access these things on the way to work. So it's, it really is something that we find that a lot of people in the community want that kind of access. But again, it's something we're always willing to work with and put restrictions on that would satisfy the Board. And as I understand it from Attorney Conry, the process of obtaining a site plan approval is also gonna be vested with this Board, so to the extent that the use variance is granted, the conditions that you deem fit with respect to the hours of operation on the site would be something that, of course, we'd be willing to work with you and reach some kind of agreement.
Veronica, what do you think?
I was curious to see that there was, it was all N's, basically, that it's not, not an allowed use. The only other use that I saw that was not allowed in the town on this list was manufactured home park. I know that we, the town doesn't want the, the home parks, but I was surprised about the storage facility being on that list. I agree with Jake Morrison, who made the comment that, that not a lot available in terms of storage. I speak with people pretty often looking for storage facilities, and I'm just curious why the town has chosen to not allow it as a use. I think, I've seen several Cube Smarts. That's what, I think that is, right, is, is the Cube Smart, your facility?
We have Cube, well, to the extent that the Board doesn't know, a lot of times, when you build out these self-storage facilities, you go to a third-party management company. And so when you see an extra space prime storage Cube Smart, oftentimes, those are privately owned, but they're under management of one of those companies. And that's typical, what we do. There's a Cube Smart location that we're opening up in Plastown, New Hampshire, and then we have an extra space storage in New Bedford. It's extra space storage in Bourne, just opened up recently. So it's, it's, it's going to be one of these nationally-run facilities.
I've seen them, and I think they, they look well-kept, well-managed, and... And, um, interestingly, I think that building kinda matches the structural aesthetics as Noria, which is that gas station that just went, just went in, which the neighbor.
And I'd like to tell you that was planned, but it wasn't. That's a good coincidence.
That's my comment.
Mrs. Debonis, I'd like to just bring, curi, there's a, another curious factoid in this, this table of principal uses. The, also joining, storage facilities, uh, as apparently being banned from town, filling stations for gasoline, diesel fuel and liquid are also not allowed in any zoning district.
Really? I missed that.
Uh, so, which, which is pretty weird, uh, but, uh, so I, I just point that out. I, I don't know whether this is just something that, that happened. I don't remember there, I've been in town for a, a long time. I don't remember there ever being a...
Monitorium gas stations? We had them in 2006.
No, no, I, I wasn't talking about gas stations, but, but storage facilities. I haven't remembered there being a problem or a war, or, so we gotta ban those, and the, these, there are four or five in town. One was built in 86, some were built in the 90s, some in the early 2000s. So, uh, I don't know when, I, I think they were built in spite of the fact that this, this chart existed. I don't, I don't remember this chart being changed to specifically eliminate storage facilities, that, that's, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to address the fact that, that I don't think that the town has made a statement that they don't want storage facilities, but, but it says in the zoning bylaw.
Well, that's, that's what's in front of us. I'm not against storage facility personally. Uh, it's a beautiful building, no doubt, but I believe the town is gonna be scavenging for retail and commercial use in the next 20 years, and I hate to see a property like this go for that. If I have any leverage to do it, I would like, if you come with a commercial project, I would have no problem with it personally. But let me hear from the clerk, see what he thinks. Jim, what do you think?
I'm, I'm leaning more in favor of this than opposed, and I have a couple of questions and, and...
Please, please.
Jim. I turned it off when I was hitting it with my map, sorry, Bob. I, I'll start over. I'm, I'm leaning in favor of this project, um, for, for many reasons, but I have some questions, and, and I'd like to reserve the remainder of my comments until we've opened this up to the public, 'cause I see some faces out here that may have some comments that may bear upon the board. So I'd like to hear from them. But, um, my question is, when I think of storage facilities, I think of two different types of facilities, and maybe three, but one of those types of facilities would be like, um, storage containers or, or, um, shipping containers with doors on them and, and just, I, I don't wanna say poorly built, but, um, frugally-built metal containers that have no heat, no air conditioning, no power, and, um, people pay a lot of money to put stuff in it, and they come back a few months later and it's ruined by the elements. And then there's another type of storage facility that I'm aware of, where it's a single structure, and you walk into the single structure, and then all the storage are individual cells or components of that structure, and that building is environmentally controlled, heated and air-conditioned, and, and humidity-controlled. And, and, I mean, back in the day in Boston, they had one, and they actually had a big air-blown lock hanging off of it, and that was their...
Still there.
I'm sure every, a lot of people are familiar with what I'm saying. And that was very popular because, um, back when it was in vogue, to have an animal skin coat, a woman could put it in storage there and get it back without, um, it being ruined. So my question to you is, is this a facility that's climate-controlled, or is this just a space that people that have stuff they can't part with, put it in it to, to let it decay until they come back, and then they decide not to pay rent anymore, 'cause the stuff that's in there isn't even worth removing?
No, I, I think it's, it's a great point. It's actually part of our business model, is to create humidity controls and temperature controls. So the entire facility is both heated and air-conditioned, and it's also has a humidity control. And it, and the problem that you're talking about with respect to somebody's fur coat is the same thing that happens with somebody's couch.
Uh, I used the fur coat because not too many people have them anymore, and I didn't wanna, um, get all the people with couches and storage bins down opening their container tonight.
Yeah. No, but I, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar with, with both styles, and when, when you go to one of the other properties, where you see what I always call row buildings, you know, you, the concept of what a storage facility is, is you have a long, narrow building on both sides, you have these drive-up storage places where there's no heat, there's no humidity control, and there's no air conditioning.
Um, let's take a, let's take a wild imagination and say, for some reason, it failed as a storage facility, the building could be repurposed as something else. It could become a retail store, it could become, it's, it's, it's a...
Could become anything else.
Could become a restaurant, it could become light manufacturing, it could...
That's, that's all correct. And, yeah, I mean, one of the things I can promise you that you never see at the site if we obtain the approvals here, uh, is that you won't see the row buildings that you see at other sites, and you'll never see one of those portable boxes that they move to somebody's house and then stack them up out front.
I think the thing that a lot of people have in their mind is those things, that those, you know, they come back, they, they, they come in on the back of trucks, and they dump them on the ground, and they call it a storage facility, and they're not, um, appropriate.
Yeah. That's not something that would ever be on one of our sites.
Okay. I think that's the end of my questions for now. Like I said, I'd like to hear what, what, if anything, any public members that are present have to say.
Richard, what do you think?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Chairman, some clarification on why we do have some in the, in the town. Did they get, did they go through the zoning board?
No, they were allowed before.
They were allowed before?
They were allowed use, yeah.
Yeah.
And apparently, the people said enough, just like the gas station, and they said they don't want them no more. And then again, I'm not against them, I just personally don't like to see on that property.
So the, the idea that it is a climate-controlled, it's a, it's a building, and again, he did just, uh, clarify that if it did fall apart, uh, the business didn't work or whatever, somebody else could come in and make something of it. So it, I don't feel that it's a, a building that would be a detriment to anything if, it could be reused. If it, if it couldn't be reused, or if it was a bunch of containers, I probably wouldn't be for it, but with this being the way it is and designed, I think that you could get some years out of it and to benefit the, the town, so.
I, I gotta, I gotta amend my comment, that I, I actually do view it, I know a lot of people don't, but I do view it as a retail use. And, and, just like I never thought a dentist was a retail use, but they love to be in malls. I mean, just, so, you know, they, they want to be in a traffic area, and, and as, as previously discussed, somebody wants to go at two o'clock or three o'clock in the morning and get their father's ashes that were putting in urn in a storage unit, and let them go. That's one less cow on the road at heavy traffic times.
I understand. I just believe it's a valuable property to go for. I mean, you could have thirty local employees there versus one or two to run that.
Okay.
That's my opinion. You could have a restaurant that creates tax meals for the town, that, all kinds of stuff, but then again, that's my opinion. I wanna move to the audience, uh, to the public. Is there anyone here who wanna speak in favor of this project? I see none. A favor? Yeah. Mr. Baptiste, wanna come forward? If you wanna grab any mic over there. Any mic?
I've been looking at the ISO for 13 years. I think it'll be a great positive, uh...
I'll say just your name for the racket.
Mike Baptiste, West Wareham. I think that'll be a great asset for West Wareham, as you see the big transition of, uh, commercial space coming down the strip. Anything that looks good gives everybody a good feeling of what's going on. As yourself, you've got a good building down the street.
Thank you.
And I think this'll be a, a good positive add to the area.
It's definitely a pretty building. I didn't say it wasn't, and, uh, I think the purpose, that one matters.
Storage facilities, when you said, you know, they're not allowed in town, you know, we have four.
Yeah, we have four.
And, uh, something like this, I think, is, is on the tops, top-end scale. I think it'll, it'll...
We have one on the toll road, it's pretty good, just similar to that.
Yes, right, right behind it, yes. And I think it'll, it'll be definitely an asset to the town. You know, I'm in favor of anything I could do to help them, I would.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Anyone else in favor? Charlie, do you wanna say something?
Just, just a comment or two. Um, I've had some experience with site plans for, uh, many storage facilities, not here, but, uh, in other places where I've acted as consultant. Um, it's certainly a benign use. Not an awful lot of traffic associated with this type of a use. So it's, it's part of, um, the discussion that probably wouldn't take too much time to get through if you go and decide that you wanna have, um, allow the variance to take place. But they're not without issues that need to be addressed. Although traffic is not an issue, parking can be, and access can be, depending on how it's laid out. If the building is 300 by 100, that's a pretty good-sized building, so when you're looking at, uh, a storage facility, you're gonna wanna be able to have access to each of those doors. You don't want parking, uh, in front of the doors or in some way that obstructs somebody else's access to their unit. On the other hand, I wouldn't want to, and this is just a personal thing, um, I wouldn't like to see a contractor's bay become the norm in this, especially with Great Hill Mobile Home Park being a retirement building right directly behind it. Lighting could be an issue because of the fact that, uh, if you're gonna have the lighting above every unit, again, they should pay attention to what's gonna happen out back, because it will be in that direction toward the Mobile Home Park, it's directly behind it. There's nothing to either side, but there is behind it. So it's not to say that it, it can't be done tastefully, and it can't be done in such a way that these issues are addressed, but I've seen them come up before, and, uh, just so that your board is aware of it, should you decide to, uh, allow the use.
Can I address something briefly?
Yes.
Uh, you know, when I, when I use the term contractor bay, I think oftentimes that conjures up the idea that this is a 1,000 or 2,000-square-foot bay that somebody's driving their big flatbed into and doing all kinds of activity. That's not what I was referring to. I was talking about the electrician that's running his solo shop. He goes over to a 10-by-10 box to pull out some of his equipment that he doesn't wanna store at home, or that he's not allowed to store at home, or he can't store at home. Uh, I think the largest size bay that we have on the exterior is limited to some 10-by-20s on the front side, and then the majority, and the remainder of the ones around the backside that we'll ultimately be proposing are 10-by-10s. And as far as the lighting on the backside, or what might be distraction to the neighboring, uh, manufactured home park out back, all the wall mount lightings are all downward-facing. They're the environmentally friendly, low-impact, uh, lighting that we do at all the facilities. And there's also a pretty significant tree buffer between us and the manufactured home park out back as well. So I don't, I don't think, and I would hope, that it wouldn't be something that would, uh, bother any of the residents next door. Not to mention the fact that the, the, the usage of these facilities is oftentimes very, very light. I mean, it's kind of incredible when you think about a 60,000-square-foot building like this, but we really wouldn't anticipate seeing more than 30 or so customers per day once the place is fully occupied.
All right. And that, the land, they did lay it out, lay it out good. I mean, there's plenty of buffer and plenty of parking, but, uh, like I said, it's a good building, but, uh, but it's just...
I think we got another comment coming up next.
Yeah?
I got another comment.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Oh, okay.
So, uh, it's definitely a nice building, nice layout, but I still believe the use is not correct. All right. Mr. Menes, are you in favor or against?
I'm just, I just want some information.
Okay, go ahead. What do you like to know?
Um, generally, how many people do you employ in, in these, um, facilities?
There'll be one to three employees there. Usually two.
And would there be any outside storage whatsoever?
Not any outside storage whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else in favor? I hear not anyone against this project. Wanna speak against? Nobody against? Okay.
So I believe that they're here tonight just to find out how we feel about the use, and they're gonna come back to us with a real plan...
With the site plan.
If, if they get a favorable action.
Yeah, kinda like that, yeah.
So do we, do we close the, the hearing, or do we just, do we give them a straw vote? Do we, do we vote on it like we're doing with, uh, Manix, uh, just this portion of it, or...
Well, if you guys believe, feel that the use variance is good, you could close on the, you could grant the use variance, and they come back for a site plan.
As a whole new application, or just under the same thing?
Would, would you guys apply this time? What is the application?
What are you looking for?
Did you guys, did you guys apply for a site plan, too, or just a use variance?
No, we applied for the use variance with the expectation of submitting a fully engineered and architectural drawings for the site plan.
Under the same application?
So what we were hoping for tonight is to obtain a vote on the use variance that we've requested, and then we'd come back with a, a further submittal for the site plan.
So we could leave the public section of this open and still take a vote on the use variance?
I can.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yeah.
Was an application for site plan review actually filed?
No.
Let me look at the, at the...
We got an answer right there from attorney representing the...
Not specifically filed, no. I filed a application for, uh, a variance, uh, or a, a determination by the board that the, the use is a permitted use. So, uh, essentially, uh, that would have fallen within, uh, essentially, an appeal of the building, the building commissioner's determination that it's not a permitted use. And contained in our materials, I, I did make some...
Well, the application is for a variance for the use, so there's no application for site plan.
That, that being the case, wouldn't it then have to come back as a regular site plan review before the planning board?
I mean, uh...
Once the use is allowed, it's like as, as attorney, uh, has said, it's essentially an allowed use if you grant the variance. So then it becomes a situation where the site plan review is the only thing, and if there's no variance involved, doesn't the planning board get the plan?
We'll, we'll probably still be back for a parking variance, if that makes a difference.
Why you need parking variance? You got plenty of room.
Well, there's plenty of room, but there's no need to create so many parking spaces and take away from the green space when there's no one's coming there to utilize all the parking spaces your zoning would otherwise require.
So you wanna reduce the parking spaces, you're saying?
We will wanna reduce the parking spaces and maximize all the green space that we can on a property like this.
I would say, once you come for a variance, you stay here.
Okay.
Six half a dozen.
Either place, you're gonna hear the same information, so...
Pretty much. So, uh, but let's vote on the variance part tonight, if the board feel comfortable to do it tonight, or think about it.
Well, I'd make a, I'd make a motion to grant a use variance for this, for this use.
Let's make a motion first, to close...
Do you wanna close the hearing?
To close the variance part, yes.
Just the pub, just the portion of this hearing pertaining to the use.
Okay.
I make a motion to close that portion of this hearing.
All right, any discussion on that? None? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor to close 31-21, say aye.
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 I oppose, so it's closed. No motion?
So my motion would be to grant the use variance, subject to them returning with a site plan for a review.
All right, so you have a motion to, to grant the use variance, subject to come back for a...
A full site plan review.
Full site plan review. Let's leave the discretion for Mr. Buckland, whether they come to us or to planning.
Fine with me.
Do we need to add no outside storage on that?
No, that's as the plan presented.
That'll be part of the site plan review, I, I would, I would assume.
Well, the use variance will be granted as, as shown on the plans, if the board wishes. So I have, so we have a motion by Jim to grant the use variance as presented, and subject to site plan review, well, let the town planner decide if it come back to us or to the planning board. But if you need another variance, you're gonna have to come back here, and with the special perm, with the site plan altogether, might as well. All right, that's the motion by Jim.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Uh, second to that.
Second?
By Jake.
Jake?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Jim E., aye.
Aye.
Jake?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and I'll deny, so it carries. So use variance, it carries. All right, and I'll deny, so it carries. So use variance carries. And I guess you got to prepare for your site plan.
We will be back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, all.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Have a great evening.
Four, one.
All right, 32-21. Thomas, yeah.
I'm sorry, you can, I'll interrupt you later.
All right, Thomas and Sharon DeJoseph, that was special permit, 61 South Boulevard.
When we sign these, you've got to sign as denied.
Yeah.
But there's going to be a site plan. You're going to vote on that too. Are we going to sign to, or are you going to deny the site plan too?
No, I might agree to it if it's designed.
That's what I'm saying, so how do you, when you, when you...
We sign the variance now, the special per, site plan will be different.
Two different signatures, okay.
Okay, very well. Name and address for the record.
Paul Clark, 26 Access Road, East Wareham.
And ma'am?
Sharon DeJoseph, 16 Barnum Road, Danbury, Connecticut.
Okay, this public hearing still open? Where'd we leave it last time? Where were we?
There was some confusion about the shape of the existing deck.
Yeah.
As shown on the plans.
Yeah.
And I believe Mr. Akabachi went the following day and took a look at it to clarify that issue.
I did, and I can elaborate on that if the board so wishes.
Yes. So let's, let's hear it from...
So when we looked at the picture, it clearly looked like there was a raised wooden deck and on maybe a patio. But when I, when I went there, it's just, I wouldn't say it was trick photography, but I'd say the photograph tricked us. It was as they described, if you will, a gambrel-shaped deck. If you laid a gambrel roof on its, or a gable end on its side, that's kind of the shape of it. And it's simply that they want to remove the existing wooden deck and put a new improved wooden deck in the same place. So what we saw in the pictures was, our eyes were tricking us. It was, it wasn't existing wooden deck.
All right, this one, Chris on that one. Chris, what do you think?
I don't have any problem with it right now.
Veronica?
I don't have any questions or comments.
Jake?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Richard?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Anyone in the audience, in the public, against or for this project? I hear none.
I would just like to speak in favor of it and maybe give a little history of why we're so passionate about having it done. A little over a year ago, on July 3rd, I was treated at Toby Hospital for a bull's eye rash and flu-like illness. And it was a tick-borne illness that has been treated a couple of times over the past year without success. My condition has deteriorated. I'm currently under the treatment of a Lyme specialist. And the deck would offer a protected area for us to enjoy some form of outdoor living. One of the issues is I'm supposed to avoid sun as much as possible. And I would like to be protected from ticks and mosquitoes and whatever because of my experience. So that's why we're so passionate about it.
All right, thank you. All right, that being heard, can we move to, move to close?
So moved.
Do I have a second to close?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
All right, motion please.
I'm, I'm going to make, I'm going to first suggest that this would qualify as a special permit and not a variance.
Okay.
Because all, all they're doing is, it's a non-conforming existing that they're, you know, building upon.
Okay.
So I don't know if you want to vote on it being a special permit versus variance separately or...
All right, so the board feels not detrimental to the neighborhood on findings, so can make a motion to...
Motion, my motion is that we act on this as a special permit.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, so special permit granted with standard condition. Second, now wishes on special permit.
So I would, I would move to grant a special permit for the plans as submitted. Standard conditions with an additional condition that it would not qualify for conversion to, you know, interior heated.
So they can't enclose it?
They're going to put a roof on it, they're going to put screens on it, they can even put windows on it, three seasons. It's just, it's just not going to convert into living space.
Okay, that, okay, so you're not going to close it and put heat on it?
Nope.
Okay, so do I have a second on that motion?
Second to that.
Second by Jake. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, aye, okay, granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was worth coming back, wasn't it?
Absolutely.
It was worth sitting here all night.
Have a good night.
Have a good night, folks. Thank you for coming back. I hope you feel better, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck, ma'am. All right, public hearing 34-21, Conchella Divine or Divine, special permit or variance 6 Depot Street.
That one you got to read.
Okay, five, zero, zero, 34-21. And we want to read that right out of the folder again.
Okay.
You start reading, I start writing stuff here.
Let me, let me spray my throat. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold an online public hearing on July 14th, 2021, at 6:30 PM to consider petition number 34-21 for a special permit and variances from the requirements of Article 3, Section 320, and Article 6, Section 623 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Conchella Divine, 11 Perry Avenue, E, East Wareham, Mass. Seeking to change the use of the existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling located at 6 Depot Street, East Wareham. That appears on Assessors Map 15, Lot 1034, in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
All right, so...
Hey, my name's Tom Driscoll. I am representing Conchella Divine. I am the, the property manager for her.
Okay.
This piece of property.
So you want to tell us what you're trying to do there?
We had a fire a year and a half ago.
Okay.
And during the renovations in the house. The problem I keep having with this house is I've rented to somebody, like, say, a woman with two kids. And then it's a big house and next thing I know, I have 10 people living in the house and I can't control it. So what I did already is I took the downstairs and I made it a two-bedroom ADA compliant unit with a wheelchair ramp out the back, a shower, all that. And I have a disabled guy living there. They're happy, just him and his wife. And then I want to separate the upstairs and just make it a one-bedroom apartment upstairs. So it'd still be a three-bedroom house, but I think it'll be easier for me to manage the amount of people that live in the house.
So, all right, so this is the one across from deep, from Cumberland, right?
Yeah, it's actually across from like the Atlantic.
Actually across from Atlantic Motel.
Yeah.
On the corner, on the other corner.
Recently been renovated.
Down the other end of the street.
Okay, let me look at the application. While I'm looking, this one, this one will be Chris as well. All right, Chris? Do you have any comment on that?
I don't have any comments yet, thank you.
Veronica?
I'm, I'd just like to review the project. I don't have any comments at this time.
Yeah, just give us a minute, just, we're short-handed. Jake? Any comments on that?
Nothing right now.
Jake, Richard, do you know that property of...
Yeah, I stopped by yesterday and I spoke with the folks that are in the ADA because I was looking for the homeowner and they said that you weren't around or they, they weren't them, so.
Yeah.
I just got back in my vehicle and came back, but I just realized that you were renting that back part and the front part, you have like offices and stuff, you...
No, in the house, the whole first floor is their unit.
The whole first floor is their unit?
Right, and then I want to make the second floor a one-bedroom.
Because I saw on the plan, you had something about an office in there. Does the guy work out of there?
Oh, it's, it's just not considered a bedroom because it doesn't have a closet or the correct square footage, so we just, that's how we classify it.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's a real small room.
Plan in here, yeah, there's a plan in here. Here. See what else there is that might help. This is Ross McKee, remember Ross McKee used to have his sand truck on the corner there with his mother?
No, not really, let me look.
It's sold a couple times since then. There's a picture here of it that might help. I think there was, anyway.
There was a restaurant in it once?
Oh, I wouldn't know.
No.
Must have been a long time ago.
I shouldn't say never, but maybe this will help you.
It's across from that church, the church?
From the Atlantic Motel.
You know when you go down the bypass and the pumping station's on the right, if you go right, you go to onset. If you go left, you go to Cumberland Farms. Right there where you take that turn, it's on the, it's on the corner that your headlights would flash into.
It's next to the broken-down building next to the Mobile Home Park.
Any lead to me, what are you trying to do? I'm just not with it today.
What are you, okay.
You're just trying to change this from a single-family use to a multifamily?
That's all I'm doing. It's, it's been renovated. It's just, I have to make a couple of simple changes. I have to add an elect, I got to put a kitchen in.
So you want, all right, so you need to, you want to...
He needs a variance because of the lot size.
Yeah.
He's 3,000 square feet short on the lot size.
Right.
But it's a special permit for...
It's a special permit, right.
And then a special permit.
Special permit for a two-family because it's residential commercial where he zoned, he zoned for a special permit if he had the...
Yeah.
Footage.
If you had the footage, you don't need a special permit, but you don't, so you're here for a variance.
He's a variance for the footage.
Right.
And he, and, and according to Dave, he may need a variance for the frontage.
I thought that's what Dave Requena said to me, that it's still something about a special permit.
The frontage on Depot Street doesn't come to 200 feet. So they need a, a, a frontage variance as well.
But I have, I have it going down the sideline, which someone said that should suffice that, but I, I don't know.
I don't know. Someone's not on this board.
Yeah.
So they can say anything they want.
I, I understand.
And they, and they also want the building commissioner.
Yeah.
But, I mean, lots of people say lots of things, you know?
I mean, we just denied the other person...
You only get one street for frontage. You don't get multiple streets.
Okay.
We, I mean, this board does, personally do not like to give variances to create another unit. I don't mind giving a variance for a height setbacks, not creating another unit. And we just denied the gentleman across from Abbey, what's that corner?
Yeah, I, I, I know.
And we create, we denied JC Engineering for a duplex, so he's turned it to duplex and you don't have the footage. And I don't see that. I mean, I have to use that leverage now. You don't have the hardship to do this. You just want to create two units and then not a conforming lot to have two units. And I personally don't like to do this myself, but we start, by Chris, what do you think, Chris?
It's, well, I think we have a different case than what the other cases were before. This is already a building that's already built. I, I don't think I have a problem with making it a two-family.
All right, Veronica?
I'm in agreement with Chris in terms of this is different from the one that was the Abbey Glass one. I think he had 8,000 square feet and he was looking, and he wanted to make a use that you needed, what, three-family and which would require, what, 45 or 60?
Right.
Whatever it was, so it was a big...
Keep in mind, let me, let me, let me, keep in mind whether he needs 10,000, 1,000, 100. You're going to grant a variance for unlawfully raw to create a second unit. We're not granting a variance for setback. And you're going to be flooded from the whole town and you have to be consistent. This board does not, previously did not grant variances and duplexes and non-conforming lots. And I don't think we should. I, I personally pass on a lot today to purchase because I can do duplex and I didn't want to apply for a variance because I have to be same highway three people treat me. Making a setback, height, like I said, adding a deck, encroaching, I have no problem. But creating another unit, I don't think we should open this option in town. But that's, that's one voice anyway.
And if we, and if we were creating a second unit, would that mean two water bills, two sewer bills, two, 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 two?
Not necessary, no.
Not as an accessory?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
But that's what you call a foreigner, right? So he could be, that's irrelevant whether he pays double the sewer and stuff. You're just creating, like it's creating a build of a lot, a second build of a lot.
So I, I hear your concerns and so I'm going to suggest to the applicant that maybe he could solve his problem with his lease and make his lease sublet-able so that the one tenant could sublet to the handicapped person or to the other person.
How big is the house?
It's a cape.
Square footage-wise, it's probably 2,600.
Without the basement? Doesn't look that big.
It does, it is, but, but it is.
It's, I think it's like 1250 a floor.
Yeah, all right, well, that's...
It's quite a big house.
Opinion.
No, I get your, I get your point because once we make it a multifamily, then it's a multifamily. It can, it can go back to the 10 people in the house and I, I understand what our chair is saying, so I think I want to take his, I'm going to take, I'm going to agree with him. I think you need to solve your problem with your lease and, and make, make a master lease to one person and let them sublet to another. I know it's, I know it's a, it's a PIA, I know.
I manage a lot of properties.
Easily for this size, it's a nightmare. House rent now, they's $3,500. But like I said, that's my opinion. Jake?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Yeah, Richard?
Nothing.
Anyone in the public want to speak against or in favor of this project? I hear nothing. What, what do you guys wish to do? I spoke. My wishes, you guys have to decide. Do you want to close? Do you want to...
I'll make a motion to close.
Do you want to add anything before we close the public hearing?
No, no.
I'll make a motion to close and, and, and I'll further make a, a following motion to approve. But if one or two people, if two people say nay, it doesn't, it, it becomes denied, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I can, I can make a favorable motion and then vote nay?
No.
We cannot.
No.
So if I make a motion to approve...
Motion to grant, how are you going to say no?
Okay, then I make, then I make a motion to deny. Well, first I'm going to say, let's close the public hearing.
Yes. Okay.
Second to that.
Second to close public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, so it's, we close. Now the board's wishes.
So I'd like to make just a little bit more of a comment.
Yeah, you can do discussion.
So it's not just lot size, it's also frontage, which likely would need a variance. So, and with no hardship, it's difficult for, I think, for myself to approve with those two marks against the project. Because I think we probably have a lot of lots similar to the one that you own and we have to, as Mr., as the chairman said, we have to be consistent with as much as possible.
All right, that's Mrs. Dovin's comment, so do we have a motion? Okay, if there's none, I make a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Akabachi. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Chris, you vote? Chris, you vote on that?
Uh, deny.
Denied, yes. Okay, Veronica?
Aye.
Jake?
Deny.
Okay, didn't carry. Sorry, sir.
All right, that's it.
That's it.
Sorry.
Okay.
Hope you understand how we came to our conclusion. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
All right. Second hearing, it is 35-21 Shirley Boyens on variance on 19 Restful Lane. And I think... Oh, are you here? I thought there was a letter.
I don't look like you, but I am.
Wow. You look like a sure. All right. Okay, you're gonna bear with us. We're gonna read it.
Which one we got now? 3521.
Give me a favor, try to keep everything here for her, she said.
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, don't mix it with that.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold an online public hearing on July 14, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. to consider petition number 3521 for a variance from the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Shirley Boyens of 18675 U.S. Highway 19 North, Lot 7474, Clearwater, Florida, zip code 33764, seeking to create a buildable lot located at 19 Restful Lane, East Wareham map, East Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors' map, 119 Lot 368 in the R-130 zoning district.
All right, name and address, sir, for the record?
I'm sorry?
Name and address for the record?
My name is Attorney Robert Feingold, 700 Pleasant Street in New Bedford.
Hey, guys, wanna keep it a little quiet? Okay, go ahead, John. State your case, please.
So, Mr. Chairman, I am getting a little older, and I can't resist telling a story, if you don't mind. I've never been before your board in Wareham before, but I want you to know I have lots of contacts with Wareham. When I was little, my parents used to bring me to the White Rabbit Restaurant on Sundays.
Into the making.
When I was little, I delivered chicken to the White Rabbit. All right. We had turkey. And my wife of 57 years, her family had a pond, a little cottage on White Island Pond that we used to go to in high school. And I confess that Wareham is the only town where I got two traffic tickets in one night. I was 16 years old, just got my license. I had to give a speech in Hyannis for the Kiwanis, High School Kiwanis. I was the governor of New England. And I got a ticket for going 15 miles an hour on Main Street, going down to Hyannis. And on the way back, I got another ticket for straddling the double yellow line in front of the police station. So I have contacts with Wareham, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight for Shirley Boyens, who grew up here.
Shirley is your client?
Yes.
Okay.
And she obtained her house in 1980 from her mother. And the adjacent property they acquired, she and her husband, her former husband, acquired in 1987. As part of the divorce, he was supposed to deed over the empty lots, some of the lots to her. They were unsophisticated and didn't know about the concept of merger of title. If it wasn't for the fact that the title had merged, she would have had a buildable lot. So when she and her husband lost their jobs, they went down to Florida, and they live in a used mobile home, and...
We're listening. Just keep going. I'm just asking for a second.
Only thing I got is the town's plot.
All right, keep going.
And she would like to either build a retirement home, she's 73, a retirement home on this lot, or sell it for retirement income. She is not wealthy at all. So we need a variance from the dimensional requirements. It's in the R-130 zone. They have, the frontage required is 200. They have 166. The area required is 130,000, which is quite large, it's several acres. They have 13,000. The front setback required is 100 feet. They have 75 for the whole lot. I just went there today to double-check. I attached a photograph of an abandoned car to see how the lot was being used right now, and I just wanted to make sure before I came here that it's still there. And what I found was, a lot of cars are there now, abandoned, two boats, and a lawnmower. So, and my client, I'm sure didn't know, because when I asked her today, she didn't know even if the abandoned car was still there. So, the neighborhood is really nice. All of the lots are about the same size as her lot. I haven't, I didn't see any empty lots except for hers. It's all overgrown with all of these vehicles on it. It's being used as a dump. And her hardship would be financial if she can't turn it into a buildable lot. If she turns it into a buildable lot, it will be an enhancement for the neighborhood. It will not be a detriment. It won't hurt anybody. It won't hurt the public good to have a house that's like all the other houses in the neighborhood. I mean, it was called the Shangri-La development back when, and all the lots are almost the same size. You can see it on the plan that I attached. So this won't hurt anybody. It won't hurt the public good. It should help the public good. It certainly will help the town have a little real estate tax.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Sure.
When they acquired that property in 1980, right? Looks to me they acquired, they bought it on 1980.
Yes, she got it from her mother in 1980, and then they, no, they acquired... Okay. She acquired the house lot in 1980, and then she acquired the extra lots. I can't which, I can't, I can't tell you which she got first, the house or the empty lots.
But she still owns both?
One was in 80, and the other was in 87.
She still owns both lots?
No. She sold the house lot to her son, who lost it to foreclosure.
Okay. But see, but even in 80 or 87, our zoning law for the grandfather came in effect in 1959. So it's not like she owned it before, and they never check boarded it, the two lots. They bought it knowingly in 1980. When they bought it, these laws were in effect. It's not buildable. Do you understand?
No, I do understand. I wasn't told that by my paralegal.
Right. You see, if they had, prior to zoning change, if you owned it prior to 1959, I believe.
Right.
And when the change came in 59, that was eight years grace period. You have to go change the name, the two lots, as long as you have 50 feet of frontage, 5,000 square feet. So if you did that within that period, your lots are buildable if it's not held on a common ownership. But in 1980, that was way behind, beyond that point. So when you buy something like this, you know it's not buildable.
Well, you know what I don't understand? Right now, you have to have 130,000 square foot. That's three acres.
That's recharge area for the town. This is our zone two for drinking water. This is why we have that. This is, it's called Zone Two, and that's where all our wells is, and it's protected area. So you have to have a certain septic system there and all that. And regardless, you can't even build a one-bedroom house on it. You have to inquire like somewhere else, like 10,000 square feet for each bedroom. Even if you have a buildable lot, you need 10,000 square feet for each bedroom. So what you do, you go buy land in the same zone and put on the side to build that. But that's besides the point. The point is that this land was acquired. I could see if they owned it since 1940, and they never did anything with it. Maybe the board would look at it different, but when they bought it, they bought it unbuildable. And I don't see the hardship. The hardship is not for financials, for the land. And that land don't have no hardship whatsoever. Doesn't meet frontage, doesn't meet setback. You don't even meet setback. Doesn't meet the size, doesn't meet anything.
I understand. However, it is exactly like every other lot that has a house on it.
I understand.
So how does it hurt anything?
We got lots in Wareham, 2,500 square feet.
I'm just saying it's totally consistent with everything that's there already.
I totally understand, but we don't make the laws. We interpret them.
But you can make exceptions.
I can, but when it seem fits. But I don't feel comfortable to make it fit. Go ahead, Jimmy.
I'm still fuzzy on the chain of ownership.
Okay, this is what I have. She acquired it in 1980 from her mom.
She inherited the property from her mother, or bought it or whatever.
Right. 366B, 367, and 395 used to belong to her with her husband, which they acquired in 87. So let's look at the...
Let's, yeah, that's 360, that's other lots. Let me go find them on the...
366B, 368, and 369, right?
Jim, if you're looking through this?
Yeah.
That's not correct. If you look at the darkened one at the end.
Ah, that's what's...
I went by it yesterday just to verify what I was looking at, and the lots, the way they're broken up, the one that I highlighted is not anywhere near. But this one here shows the actual, what it really looks like, the way the lots hook around one another. There's a couple to the side that have a little leg to the left. And if you look at the highlight, if you look at the highlighted one, it's not even close to what we're looking at, so... Just to clarify that.
So which one are the lots? These three? Or all these?
No, it's the one on the left-hand side, on the top.
So there was A and B. I see 366A and B and...
This one, this land hooks right around it, and then here's these two right here.
There's a house here, right?
No, there's nothing. There's four cars, a boat, a camper, pile of debris.
That's what I was...
It's pretty much, and if it's not her, somebody is definitely taking advantage of her and dumping a bunch of... I mean, it's a horrible sight.
It's certainly not her.
And there's two cars with license plates on them, two cars that have been abandoned for a long time.
Well, I'm sure if she lives in Florida, she's 70. She's not...
Right, 73, yeah. She doesn't know this because I talked to her today.
I've never been by that. Well, I've been down that road, but I've never really looked at the lots. But to see the fact that people are using that for her, I mean, they must not, she's not been around and even tell them to not...
And I'm sure her neighbors would love that to be a buildable lot.
I know, but the setbacks and everything, the size of that lot, to get a house and a septic system and everything on there. It's a small lot, very, very small.
Is this the one? No, 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 no. There was, there's one up there where the road just kind of ends early. And the town puts some, you know, re, you know, the hell, they grind the road up, and that's not, that's not...
Reproced?
Yeah, reprocessed. That's not near here.
No, it's when you go up into the Shangri-La area, and you go by, you come down, Peaceful Lanes on the right, you go up to top of the hill, Restful Lane, and they all run parallel with one another.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Charlie, what's, when they break a lot, two lots with the dotted line, what's that mean?
I'm sorry?
When they break two lots with the dotted line, not a solid, what's that mean? Are they still two lawful lots?
What are we looking at here?
368 and 369. See how, there's not a solid line between them? It's only a broken line?
When, I'm not sure how the assessors office is doing it now, and in my opinion, it probably means that the two lots are used as one. In some areas, in that area, there are some lots that have drainage movements over them, but they wouldn't be shown that way. So my assumption is that, for example, at the intersection of Mayflower and Peaceful, there were two lots, 397 and 398 with a dotted line.
Yeah.
Probably means they're all one.
Right. That's what my understanding is.
Two lots probably owned by the same individual.
Yeah, probably.
Quite a few of them there, huh?
Yeah. Just for the record, too, that zoning change was 1973.
73?
73. Went to agricultural watershed, 200 feet of frontage, 130,000 square feet.
The 130, but not the grandfather law. The 130,000 came in on 73, but the grandfather in 59.
Original zoning was in 1951, and it was, it went from 6,500 to 10,000.
Yeah.
Up in that area, and then I think to 30,000 before it went to three acre.
Right, but I'm talking about when the grandfather laws came in. But regardless, it doesn't comply with either one.
I don't recall that detail.
Prior to 51 at least, so you're not even close to 73.
I'm just curious. I'd like to know about the inheritance and what was actually inherited from the mother.
She, I don't think she inherited it. I think she actually bought it from her mother. Not for a lot of money, but I don't think it was zero.
Okay.
And that was in 19, and that was 19, yeah, I think I have a deed here.
19, I could see the deed.
1980.
1980. See, bottom line, since 1980, the 369 and 368 were...
It was one lot?
One lot. Or same ownership. There were one buildable lot, both of them. Apparently, 369, the son owned the house, lost it for whatever, foreclosure. Now the sister, you saying, or the sister has 368? She wants the variance, dimensional variance, square footage, frontage, all kind of variances to make it buildable.
Sure they...
We get the point.
Yeah.
In 87, in 87, the mother sold it to, sold the empty lot to James Brown, her former husband, and Shirley. That was in 87, parcels one, two, and three. So that would have been where the house was. And in 1980, the mother... One second. The mother sold it to, here it is.
Well, yeah, she sold them both. She got 68 and 69. I'm reading the deed. Also, the, it says lot 368 on a plan, and then blah, 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 and blah, and then it says also lot 369.
Right. In 1980, Hazel, the mother, sold it to Shirley Boyens, and that was the house lot.
It's irrelevant who they, who they sold or bought.
Well, it could be an imperfect deed, but I'm saying even the deed, even the deed doesn't agree with the... Even this deed shows that both lots were transferred.
Who owns that now?
Shirley. Shirley owns it now.
Shirley...
Boyens. That's her new name.
Oh, okay. She was Shirley...
Gallagher or...
Stammer.
Stammer, you know, she's been married, she's been married twice.
Okay, and now Shirley, who lives in Florida, so she must have sold 369 to somebody with the house.
I believe that went to her son. That went to her son.
And the son lost it. She still have 368. Okay.
She left herself.
Anyway, I think I've heard that.
We make a motion to close?
Yeah, sure.
Second it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The public, any...
Jim Manese, Cranberry Highway. I'm not sure if the new bylaws we passed at the Spring Town Meeting would affect this.
What was it?
Which would be accessory in buildable lots, if you have an affordability part to it. So that's new. I'm just, and it's still, you know, we passed it and went to the Attorney General's office, so...
You passed an accessory, accessory...
Accessory in the lots, so as long as they were created before a certain date, and if you put a deed restriction on it and make it affordability.
I think accessory apartment, accessory...
Both.
Dwelling, total dwelling?
So I would just, I'm not telling you what to do.
Right, I don't know.
I would just say, maybe ask Ken, how and if it would affect this.
Did it come back from the Attorney General yet?
But it was passed already.
So can we continue, or... So can we continue, or?
Did you hear that, Counselor?
And that's all I wanted to say.
I don't think it applies on this matter, I think it's the accessory. Accessory apartments, I mean accessory, remember we always have issue within a built house and accessory apartment, I think that's what he means, but if you want to continue it...
One, one other fact, I reread the deed, she got it from her mother for less than $100.
That's irrelevant what she paid for it. I saw that, but...
I said inherited, it's basically inherited.
That's, it doesn't matter.
All I want to say is this, I know it's not close to 130,000 square feet, but that place is being misused. The neighborhood would love it, I am sure if I went door to door like I've done before, they would all say, let's clean that up, let's put a house on it just like the rest of them. And, and believe me, this woman can afford, can very much use whatever she can get from that lot.
You know, duplexes are not even allowed in R130, duplex, new laws are not allowed. So, I mean, you, I, I don't, I'm, I'm not consciously can grant a variance personally.
My, my, my take on it is whoever currently owns the house that's on 369...
Should buy it for some cheap money and make it sound bigger.
They own it. Far as, far as I can see and my knowledge of what goes on with this stuff, whatever house is on lot 369 owns 368. When it was foreclosed, they did an incomplete foreclosure, because when they foreclosed, they not only got 369, they got 368 because it was combined. When the lots are undersized, you combine and continue combine until you conform. These two lots became combined. Just because the bank did an imperfect taking doesn't make it separately owned.
368.
It's a flaw in the title. So if I was, the guy that owned 369, I'd go to your lady Shirley and say, do you want $10? And if she said, no, but I'll take 1,000, I'd give her a check for 1,000 so fast, because that would solve a thousand dollars worth of legal costs for somebody to prove that 369 already owns it.
Does she have a deed for 368?
I told my paralegal to come.
So...
Hold on, I want to answer that question.
It's moot to me. I know how I'm voting.
I think you might have a point, that it was combined, it was combined.
It was combined. And when they did the foreclosure, just because the bank did a sloppy job foreclosing, the banks did a lot of sloppy jobs lending mortgages too, that didn't make it...
Let's just go over this, because I think you might be wrong.
Yeah, let's go.
In 19...
I, I was wrong once or so, but...
Let him, go ahead.
Okay, so here's the deed from 1980, from the mother to the daughter, and that was for 368 and 369. All right?
Right.
There's no deeds here.
All right. Then I have a deed from Hazel Gallagher, the mother, to Shirley, the daughter of 368, 369, in 1980. Is that the same one? Yeah, that's the same one, sorry.
You need the 87 deed.
Yep, I'm looking. It's interesting. Okay. It says 368 and 369, and it was the same lots that she got from Cape Cod Developers in September of 73. That was after the zoning change to 130,000 square feet. So, I don't know whether Cape Cod Developers own stuff on either side of it prior to not. But if it was the only land that was left around there...
Jimmy, I'll sign in.
Yes.
I'm not seeing it right now.
I mean, you know, let me...
Besides, I mean, it's, it's irrelevant if you find it or not. It's definitely, there's a, that title chain, but regardless, it's done after the fact. So, that being said, I would like to, to have a second on Jake's motion to close.
I, I did second that.
Second, all in favor to close, say aye.
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 I'm sitting on this one.
Uh, this one, 34 Papa, this is sample, Richard. Richard, so, so we have a...
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So it's closed. A motion, please, what's your wishes?
I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny by Jim, to deny the variance, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye. Do we have a second?
Do you have a second?
Oh, do you have a second? Sorry, you have a second and Jim's motion? Second by Jake, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, sorry.
I enjoyed myself even though I lost.
Yeah, but do...
But we didn't give you a ticket.
Listen, do your research, what Mr. Minnis says, maybe you fell on this gap.
But I think Jim has a point, I, I think that's probably one lot and it's owned by the bank, who took it was 368.
Yeah, it looks like it.
Because those lots were combined as one, so when they took 368, they automatically had 369 with it. Because they were in common ownership, right?
The lots we're talking about are empty, and the bank had nothing to do with...
Oh, which house, which, which was, what was lost? Was I, I misunderstood.
What was lost was the house lot.
On 369.
No, that was 366B, right?
Yes, 366B.
Oh, I was confused, I thought that...
So the guy over 366B owns them both?
I don't think so.
I, you know what I recommend? I recommend, if you really want to follow up on this, get a local engineer to research and research the chain, the title chain, and see what's up. And if you can, even if variance was denied, if you have, find substantial changes, you could come back, you don't have to wait two years.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, nobody goes anywhere, you guys gotta sign. All right, uh, let's, which one you have, Jimmy?
Charlie, you didn't hear that? Nobody goes anywhere.
Who's got this one?
I know.
That's the old stuff that you're bringing back?
Um... This is Richard. This one's Richard. But we still have other ones to sign.
One sec, one thing at a time. Which one you have, uh...
This is the one that we just decided on.
What's her name?
Chanda Devine.
Chanda, that's Depot Street, that's, no, that's Chris. Have Chris sign.
3421?
Yeah, Chris.
421, that was me.
Chris, have Chris sign. Yeah.
Oh, this is...
I, I get, then, I get, I get notes here, just...
Wow, he's fast.
Well, this is the 9500.
It wasn't, it was, you said it was a...
Depot Street is the gentleman.
It wasn't 9500.
Yeah, we, him and I denied, you guys approved. You said yes, we said no, it was 3 to 2.
You're talking about 3421? I got 320.
Yeah, that says 500. That needs to be 3 to 0.
6 Depot Street.
Hold on, who said, who said, we all said, agreed on denied.
No.
No, we said, listen, you make a motion to deny, I said yes. Jake said yes on Depot Street, you denied.
I said no.
No, I said deny.
Denied, he and Chris said deny.
Yeah, we denied.
Denied the motion to deny.
Oh, you did, oh, so you agree with the, with the, with the duplex, or you didn't?
So for clarity, we should say yea and nay, not...
We're still on the air?
It's confusing.
Please, Richard, please don't leave.
Is the meeting closed?
Yeah, it's closed. On Depot Street, you agreed with the denial or...
We have not adjourned.
Please. Yeah, 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 it's okay. You agreed with the denial or with the, with the approval?
I agree.
With the approval, so you agreed to approve it?
I agree, I want, yes.
Okay, so it's, anyway, it's simple majority, so it's denied.
320, yeah.
320, sorry, okay.
So, in the future, instead of saying, we should say yea and nay.
Okay.
Because deny, you're...
I know, it's a little weird.
Yeah, deny the deny.
Yeah, usually...
It was a motion to deny, so you're saying that you...
I, I think I talked to Chris a little bit.
So, Naz, Chris wants to know, he changed it 320, he wants to know if he can write 320.
Yeah, you gotta write 320. And please, you gotta sign your name and say yes next to it.
Can we, can we continue signing after we close the meeting, so we can stop recording?
No, we have to make one more, one more motion.
Yes.
Motion.
Oh, we gotta, okay.
I...
All right. Anyway, all right, all right, excuse me. Let's sit on our microphone, let's close the meeting, and then we could sign.
Oh.
All right, the selectmen had asked me to make a motion, get a comment on, on comment or like recommendation on who becomes a permanent member. Does the board want, the, the, selectman wants a vote?
They want us to make a, they want us to make the decision for them.
No, not necessarily, they want a recommendation. I, I move to make a motion to no recommendation, let them decide. Can I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second on this, all in favor?
I didn't hear what you said.